All right, can everybody stand for the pledge, please? You ready? Oh, I didn't, I don't know what's going on. Okay, Mr. Martin is going to present on repair reserve needs. Is that correct?
Oh, wonderful.
Do, uh...
No, it's all right. Don't worry about it. Okay, I assumed you would have your laptop with you and might have this picture. I don't know if you all seen this or not seen this.
No.
Okay, so I have some extra copies. I don't know if I have enough here for everybody. Jack, you and I can certainly look together.
Mr. Martin, it's projected for the audience. It's on the screen.
Can you see it, Kevin?
Are you enjoying it, Kevin? Okay, good.
All right, as you're all aware, we still operate a cogeneration plant, a power plant up at the high school. That's the only building it's servicing right now. Unfortunately, we have experienced an issue with one of the touch panels for one of the generators. The purpose of the touch panel is basically, um, it's the window into the operation of the unit itself. It would be as if you were trying to make a telephone call on your cellphone and all of a sudden the light went completely out. So what you're looking at is the panels, two electrical panels. The one on the left is for the 300 KW and the one on the right is for the 400 KW. The one on the left is functioning and that's what we should see on the panel on the right. And obviously, we don't. It's all black. So if your, if your screen on your phone went completely dead, but the phone was still operational, you'd be kind of fumbling around trying to make a phone call. So that's kind of where we're at right now with, with the unit. There is a way that we can look at it by shining a really, really bright light from the side and still see faint images. So that's how we're kind of running it. So what we're doing right now, we have a repair reserve fund set up to buy parts that are not covered under our contract to keep the plant operational. So the purpose of this hearing is to ask you to allow us 30 days from now to expend the proper funds to replace that piece of equipment from the repair reserve. Basically, in a nutshell, that's it. The cost for that panel is, I believe, $11,506.80.
David, we looked at possible repair of this?
Yeah, actually, we did. We thought that we might be able to get a used repaired unit. There are none, none are available. So what I'm going to do is, we have to buy a new one and then I will look at what it's going to cost to get our busted one fixed and then we'll see, you know, if that's something we also want to accomplish. So there is a total of five of these panels out in the cogeneration plant.
So what you're saying is that if you could, if you could somehow fix this one after you make the other one, the new one, operational, then you would have backup in case you needed it on one of the other four?
Yeah, that's correct.
So what I want to point out is the purpose of a hearing on this item is because we can always utilize the money from the repair reserve. But if we don't have a public hearing on it, we have to pay those funds back in the next two years. This way, we just use the funds and then we go back to our normal replenishment cycle of the repair reserve so that if there's not enough funds available after the 30 days, we don't have to repay it once it's approved by the board.
So the 30 days is to allow public comment? No different than anything else that you put out there on your first read or whatever it might be?
Correct.
I think it's important for the board because some, I don't know how often we use this repair reserve. The board to hear it is with the things that you can use this for. And the reason that I asked that is because there was a comment on, on a public Facebook site when we advertised for this meeting tonight and the comment said, "Stop using our money," right? And so that's the point of a reserve. So I'd love for you to talk about that some.
So the repair reserve is kind of like in your own personal life, starting a savings account for repair of your furnace, your air conditioner, your water tank, your hot water tank, things like that, your roof in your house. Or maybe you want to set aside funds so that if something fails, you don't have to go and take a loan for it to repair it. So every budget generates a surplus because of course, we're not allowed to overspend the budget. So since we're projecting 18 months in advance, there are often times where we can do savings to preserve our budgetary dollars and those savings we put into a savings account. And now what we're doing is we're asking the Board of Education for this one because it's under their control. Can I tap into my savings account to pay for this repair? And so 30 days is so that the public has a chance to comment. And so then in 30 days, it'll be on a board agenda to just utilize the repair reserve.
So, just so, for people who choose to watch this or for the person in the audience, um...
Our goal...
Our goal, our plan is to be off of COGEN at some point, correct?
Yeah, that is correct. That at one point, we will go through some kind of a capital project and we will reconnect to grid, national grid, and then we will abandon and try and sell off the equipment from the cogeneration plant.
So the plan right now is for a December 2020 referendum?
Right.
And the, um, um, conversion from COGEN to the grid is in that project. But when we, well, we've learned in the past project, it's just because it's a referendum in 2020 doesn't mean that the work will happen in 2021. So, so we're looking at a referendum in 2020 of December. If successful, would then go into the planning stage and then the approval stage for SED for two phases of 2022 in the summer and 2023 in the summer. Am I right, David?
Correct.
Right, so that means that this COGEN, depending on which phase it lands in, has to last at least until then.
What shape is the cogeneration plant?
You have to use the mic, Ellen. Press the button.
Press the button.
Yep.
That one.
How, what sort of shape is the cogeneration plant in there now?
Okay, so we have a contract with the people that installed the plant to perform maintenance and routine maintenance on it. So they come out and they take care of the oil changes and things associated with the engines. And they have made a number of repairs over the years. Now, is it in the best of shape? It's not in the best of shape, but it's still in a functional shape. Let's put it that way. Probably the thing that has helped prolong it is the fact that we have pulled a lot of load off of it by getting this building, the bus garage, and GLP off of the COGEN plant.
So just the junior high school, high school is on it?
Correct.
So you talked about the, looking to buy a repaired version of this panel and you couldn't find it. So let's just say, when the time comes and we are off of COGEN, would we have the option of our panels that are remaining being something that could be sold back to somebody else who...
Yeah, what, what would happen is, uh, we would, we would try and list as much of the equipment as we can, the engines, uh, some of the controls and things, and notify people that still have COGEN plants that we have this equipment out there if they're interested in purchasing any of it.
Okay, fair enough.
So it appears if we want this thing to last, say, three more years, we can't really run it without a steering component and so we have to get it fixed. That's a good way to look at it, yep.
Now, you said you, then we'll go on the grid. Is this cogeneration plant idea, it's obsolete or it's better to be on the grid?
No, it isn't obsolete. There's, there's still a push out there to continue to develop cogeneration plants. And, and really, the beauty behind the whole thing was that not only are you creating electricity with the plant, but you're using some of the byproducts, the heat from the engines, just like you would with your car, to, to help heat the building. So essentially, the, the, the car is the building itself and we have radiators inside and that's how we get the heat off of the engine and, and turn it over into the boiler system and run it through the loop and we, we don't really have to run the boilers as frequently.
Yeah, that's exactly how I was going to ask. Why, what's the reason that we're going to go on the grid?
Okay, so, so the, the big thing with the COGEN plant now is that so much of the equipment is becoming so obsolete that it really isn't worth putting a lot of money into anymore. All right? I don't know the exact number of, of hundreds of hours that are on the 400 KW engine, but I know it is the, into the multiple hundreds of thousands of hours. So it's...
And you don't qualify for any NYSERTA grants?
Well, that's true.
Or anything else like it, right?
That's true. There's a lot of things that you can't do when you create your own power. If we took every dime we saved and could put it into the lighting and other things, we probably could have, have saved ourselves a little more on the electricity, but it really would not have reaped us any rewards. Once we go back to grid, we'll be paying a, a, a charge to the power company that will allow us to get into the NYSERTA, um, grants that are out there. And, uh, when we, when I do my budget, I'm going to talk about one that we took advantage of for this building and GLP and the bus garage.
Oh, so if you, and they're all on the grid now?
They are, they are all on the grid.
Dave, this is well past its projected life when it was first put in.
Correct. We are, we are right now at the end of the current contract for the cogeneration plant. And until we get to the next, um, capital project where we sever and go back to grid, we'll have a couple more contracts that we'll have to enter into just to maintain the engines.
That was a great question from Don, too. And then I think it's worth even talking still, since we're talking about COGEN, is that even when COGEN comes off, you still have a backup to that building. Can you talk about that for a minute? Because you have a full backup to this building. What, and right now, your diesel is your full backup to COGEN. When you come off of the grid, when you cough COGEN and go on the grid at the middle school and high school, what's your backup then?
Okay, so we have what's called 100% redundant backup sitting out in the parking lot here that takes care of all the power for this building, the bus garage. At GLP, we have a separate small generator outside that takes care of all of the life safety systems, the fire alarm, the PA system, some emergency lights, the exit signs and things like that. Not everything will be powered at GLP if we lose power. At the high school, we have 100% redundant backup for our COGEN plant in a diesel generator that has a 24-hour diesel fuel tank. When we sever, we are going to have to look at what we want to do for another generator at the high school. We have a small one that's there now that again, provides life safety stuff, but it is not enough that it's going to run everything in that building. So as part of the capital project, when we sever, we're going to also look at putting a larger natural gas generator out in the parking lot. And again, we'll have a small generator that we're going to have to sell.
What sort of expense is all this going to be?
At this point, I don't know. I don't know what the, the total cost is off the top of my head. We have some estimates and we'll be meeting with the architect, I believe, next week or the week after, to go over the list and prioritize and then we'll have a little better idea because they've been crunching numbers.
So coming back to this hearing then, so the purpose, David, for you is to present this to the board? There's no action today. You'll come back 30 days from now and look for action from the board? So in the meantime, you have to continue to use the flashlight?
That's correct.
Okay. Any questions from the board for David? Do you need a new flashlight show, wants to know?
No, we're good. Thanks.
So now this part's not working? Everything, you still have full capacity for everything?
Yeah, so there's a lot of automation that goes into this whole plant. In other words, the plant itself looks at how much power we're using. And right now, the 300 KW generator is the primary generator. As the day moves on, or I should say, the morning moves on, more lights are turned on, things happen, you start using more power and then the 400 kicks in before you've exceeded the capacity of the 300. All of that automation takes place automatically as long as there are no faults on either one of the engines. If there's a fault, then the diesel theoretically kicks in and picks up the balance of the load. Then you have to figure out what the problem is, correct it, and then try and bring the engine back up online.
I thought this 400 one's not...
Not working, is that wrong?
No, it's, it is working. It's just we don't have this window to get into it to see exactly what it's doing. So if you have a fault, the fault would show up on this window. So we're not going to see it. We can't see if we have an issue with any one of the cylinders because one of the things you can look at is how hot or cold it's running.
I loved your analogy, David. It's like your phone is ringing, but you can't see the screen to answer it.
Exactly.
That was a beautiful analogy.
Yep. So, you know, this, this is really the window into the soul of the, of the machine.
We can go on, all right. Okay, recommended action, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the first reading of policy number 7131, non-resident students be approved. Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, just, just for the good of the order here, there's only two sections in this policy that I'm asking at this point to amend. This policy has been amended a number of times in the past two years. First, it was to bring in non, was to bring in non-resident tuitioned students and then to do a small amendment to that. This one is actually changing the nature of what we do with students who move out of the district. And so right now, a student who is in their senior year, first semester or second, whose parents move out of the district has the right to ask the superintendent if they can finish their school year at Eden. They're a senior, they've been here since kindergarten, their parents had to move out. They can transport themselves back and forth some way and continue their school year. What also happens, we find, is that parents of younger aid students, if they move, sometimes move, um, January, February. And, and now Lucinda and I get ourselves into a little bit of a pickle with these parents is because they legitimately have to move. They want their child to finish out the school year with us, whatever the grade is, and instead, we're getting into an argument that it's against board policy. My feeling on this particular one is it allows children that are here to finish off their school year no matter what grade. It allows our parents who find themselves in a position of a rental to, um, be able to figure out how to finish their school year, especially if they can't find housing in Eden, which we know is a, a chronic issue for us. And the third thing is, is that it saves time, energy, and resources because Lucinda and I are constantly on the phone with the attorneys trying to figure out what to do. For an honest parent to come to us now and say that I'm moving in March, we've got an eight-week window on them and they will be gone by March. For a parent who's not honest, and this does happen to us, it takes us generally eight weeks to find it and by then, it's May. And what do you do with a student whose parents have moved and it's May? Do you honestly kick them out three weeks before the end of the school year? We see this as a win-win. And, and while there may be some other looser options, this is a nice beginning and Lucinda and I've had some conversation on it. Would be really grateful if you could take a look at it and approve it.
This is if they're, it's for honor after March 1st, correct?
So it maintains a senior year anytime? And in this particular case, if in fact, the student, as your parent, vacates their district residence on or after March 1st, they would be permitted to finish their school year here?
There'll be no exceptions for prior to March 1st, correct?
I can't answer that definitively, Ellen, about whether there would ever be an exception because everything in residency lately seems to be an exception, but we work really hard to be consistent.
Anybody else?
I do want to, just looking at the, this is my third time reading through it. And although the focus really is on former residents, prospective residents, too. I mean, if you look at the 30 and 60 days, if it's not established within 60 days, if you have a family that's building a house and they, they want their kids to go here, obviously, they can pay tuition, but like, there's some situations where their families are living in apartments outside of the district waiting for a house to be, is there... I guess my question is, if they're building a house and we know that residency is a definite, do they have to pay tuition or...
Can I, can I answer this one?
Yeah, I mean, I know things can fall through.
60 days is New York state law, which Barb and I are making contact. Sandy has the discretion in that policy to extend it. If for some reason, someone came to me in good faith and showed me a closing date that was 60-day, in the 60-day window and it fell through for nothing on their fault, Sandy and I discuss it and we can extend it for those circumstances. Does that make sense?
It does. And I, Lucinda has done yeoman's job on residency. It's a complicated, becoming increasingly challenging issue. And so I always appreciate it when Lucinda puts the detail to it that she does with the history that she knows of the district and the complications that come about of building a home and she's as consistent as she possibly can be. So I thank you for that.
Anybody else? So all in favor? Aye. Any opposed, abstained? Motion carried.
Thank you.
So what are we doing?
So we've had just a minor adjustment to the agenda, but we're going on to Building and Grounds presentation for David.
Okay, you're good. Thank you.
Okay, I believe you all have the budget spreadsheet in front of you for the facilities, custodial, and maintenance. And what I want to do is just talk about the things that are impacting that budget and, uh, things that we're, we're asking you to include in the budget for the upcoming year.
Can I borrow Jim for just one minute? It's the one that was printed at 8:38 PM.
Yeah, I see it.
Okay. You have it, I don't. But that's okay. Yeah, so I've seen it. Okay, so I want to talk about a few things. First off is some software. We have a line item in the budget now for software. Our energy management system that was installed in 1998 that handles all of the heating, ventilation, air conditioning, equipment, as well as monitoring energy usage, the software itself is no longer being supported. And the vendor, who is Siemens, is telling us we really need to upgrade the server and to replace the software and go to the new version that they have out there. So unfortunately, we can't bid that to anybody else because like everything else, what they provide is proprietary. So in order to change from something that we have to somebody new would mean that all of the control equipment that that software is involved in would have to be replaced. That's not something we could do within our budget. That would have to go through a full-blown, large capital project, probably run in the $2 to $3 million range. So what we have is a $50,000 line item to purchase the new software, have them install it, have them program, and to provide a brand-new server, which will go into the Knox Center, correct? At the high school? And all of the controls will operate off of that. Now, they are, as part of the current contract, upgrading all of their head-end equipment in preparation for this software change. All right, so that's one of the items that's currently in, in the budget. It's a, it's a fairly large sum of money, but it's something I think we're going to have to expend because overall, we do save money by operating our controls on a schedule.
So just so you know, when I set up the account, I did a typo. It's not a technology grant. This will be used from the technology reserves if the voters authorize it.
Yeah, because you labeled this as a technology grant, which...
I typed wrong. I typed grant instead of reserve.
Yes.
So that's a $50,000 difference, right there? All right, that's a reserve and not a grant. All right, so that's money we had to...
Correct. It, the voters will have to authorize the use of the reserve when we get to the final end of the budget.
Ellen, can you make sure, thank...
You had maintenance of the plant, $500,270, but that, if it was a, on a grant, did you add in that 50...
That's all added in. Everything is added in above those subtotals.
All right, so it's just an error of putting grant on that?
No, right. It's just mislabeled because we would use our technology reserve if we get voter authorization. It will be a proposition to use the technology reserve on the May budget.
Dave, is this software across the whole electrical system or is it just the COGEN?
No, it really isn't so much the COGEN. It monitors some of this COGEN stuff, but it's, it's across the district, all of the, all of the heating and cooling equipment. Okay, next item, supplies and contractual expenses. Over the years, I pared this down as much as I can. We're pretty much down to having to take care of all of the things that are legal obligations to us, either through regulation, commissioner regulation, or full legal obligation. So, um, the supplies were kind of at the mercy of the vendors. Their increases are their increases. We just have to figure out how we're going to absorb them or just start doing without more things. So, um, there's a, there's a modest increase in the supply lines to accommodate the increases.
Now, David, are some of those increases in the supplies due to the capital project that we're currently completing?
Yes, some of it, some of it is. Like everything else, you get a one-year warranty when you complete a capital project. And after that warranty's gone, everything that has to be repaired falls on the district. So the project that we are just completing, a lot of the equipment no longer has a warranty on it. So it's going to fall back on us to have to make repairs to it. So there's a certain degree of trying to figure out what we might have to do and not do. I mean, there's certainly things like belts and filters and, and those kind of things that you have to plan for. And those things are embedded into the supply budget already.
Now, David, for me, having been here, um, starting this whole concept of trying to improve the operational plant seven years ago, it's nice to see this in the budget because seven years ago, it wasn't in a budget. And I don't know how you fixed anything seven years ago because it wasn't in a budget. There wasn't a replacement plan, there wasn't a repair plan. It just wasn't there. And, and I can see when we look around the plant that there's definite attention being paid to... paid to repair and replace and maintain. And it's, it's just really, really nice to look around and see that.
So within that same venue, one of the things that I did do is I put a little bit of money in, in here because as, as you know, we have a grounds person now. And I want to give him the freedom to do a little bit of improving around the facilities. So in order for that to happen, he's going to need some supplies for mulch and some dirt and fertilizer and whatever he's going to need. So there's, I think, $2,000 that I've pretty much earmarked for him so that we can improve the front of this building and do a little work in the front of the high school and the element and GLP, excuse me. So I want, I want him to take and utilize those skills that I know he has. And if I don't provide him the supplies to do that, it's kind of a waste of talent. Another item where there's an increase is in our BOSI's line. For a number of years, we did virtually nothing to try and maintain any of the safety risk items. And we kind of rolled the dice on it and sooner or later, something would have happened had we not started to move that process along. So now we're tracking some of the training and things that are required of every employee in the district. And I know Barb, Barb was instrumental in a lot of that and making sure that people were taking care of the training. One of the things that we really need to consider is an improvement upon what's already in place by having a person from BOSI's come here and spend a day a week and take a look at all of our records and make sure that we are completely in compliance and that all of the, all of the training is documented and in place. Now, that includes not only my department, that includes the bus garage because there's a considerable amount of training that all the bus drivers have to have as well. So we've added a line item in there for, for a day a week of Level 2 BOSI's safety risk within the district. That currently does not occur.
And the advantage of that is the following year, if BOSI's aid remains out of foundation aid, which is up in the air at the moment, but in the past, we've always received aid the following year on what we expand at BOSI's in the current year?
So an equivalent to that is Carrie Reinhardt, your PR associate. She comes in one day a week to do the PR for us. And then in the following year, we recoup that expense because it's an expense-driven cost. This is exact same concept of one day a week. We also do the same thing with our, with Dan Berman to some extent. Comes in twice a week, does server work for us through BOSI's, and then the following year, we recoup that. Laura's comment on if it stays out of foundation aid is because the first run of the governor's budget took software, textbook money and BOSI's and wrapped it all together into foundation aid. And by doing that, we don't have a predictable, dependable dollar amount coming back to us the following year.
Now, when it says BOSI's operation of the plant, it's someone from BOSI's that comes in to do all this?
Correct. We'd be contracting with them for one day a week for them to come in here and review all of our safety plans, the records, and make sure that we are in compliance so that if we get audited by PESH, which is the public side of OSHA, that they would be here to assist us and make sure that we're in compliance.
David, if I remember correctly too, from Grand Island, they also do the AED machines, am I right?
They can, yeah.
That would be awesome.
We can ask them to.
They check the batteries, get inside things, see, yep.
It went up by a lot, by 25,000. Is it that they were doing very little the year before, last year?
So the, the way this whole thing is structured, safety risk is blown into two pieces. They have a basic program and then they have this enhanced program. The basic program, it, they provide you information on training. They provide you information on regulation changes. They will help us set up for my guys to go to asbestos school and pesticide school. But they don't come out here to do anything. I can't ask them to come out here and attend any of our safety meetings. I can't ask them to look over our AHERO records, which is the asbestos records. So in order for that to happen, you have to move from the Level 1, which you're required to have, to the Level 2, where that person would actually come out to the district.
So that, that's the reason for the big bump up in costs?
Correct.
The, the other thing I remember from this Level 2, from using it at Grand Island as well, is that they will actually come out and run some of those safety meetings for us as well. And in addition to that, will come out and analyze our lockdowns and our fire drills and give recommendations that they're seeing in the region, which I thought was also really good.
Correct. Okay, another item that has been an expense that we really haven't identified in the budget and money used to come out of my supply side and I've taken a huge hit over a number of years, is our playgrounds. We have five playgrounds, I believe, four at GLP and one here at Eden Elementary. All of, all of those require maintenance. We have to maintain the cushioning material and we also have to go through them at least twice a year to make sure that all of the equipment is fully functional so none of the kids get hurt. So we've been expending about $5,000 or more a year on that equipment. So we have, I've talked to Laura about it. We've dedicated some line items specifically to playground maintenance. And now there's money allocated so we can take care of our playgrounds and I can continue to use my supply money to maintain the buildings, which is really where it needs to go.
So that includes the base of the playground too?
Correct.
So for numbers and numbers of years, I can remember, the question would be asked is why can't we just get free mulch from, from the?
Highway Department.
High Town. Can you address that? Because it's a really simple answer.
Okay, so the mulch that we buy for the playgrounds is actually a certified mulch. What does that mean? That means that there's no ground-up pallets which contain nails. There's no metal. There's no heavy metals. There's no arsenic. It's certified safe to use on a playground. If we don't know what's being ground up over at the town and the kids are out playing in that mulch, then we've accepted a lot of liability. So.
That's true of your gardens too. You need to use certified mulch on your gardens too, right?
Yeah, about the only place that we have used the town's mulch is on the cross-country trail running through the woods. That's it. I don't want to put it anywhere where it's particularly where the, the primary kids can get to it and play. Okay, conference expense. There's, there's an additional amount of money in there because we want to get a second person certified to handle pesticides. We have two people currently that are certified to handle asbestos, up to 10 square feet. We only have one person that is certified to handle pesticides. So we want to get a second person on board if we can, and it makes the most sense that that person be our grounds worker. All right, so bees, ants and things like that, when Don Price, who's the other person, is not available and we have our grounds worker who works into the evenings is, he can deal with those issues. But I have to get him certified because he can't work under Don's license unless Don is here. And their shifts don't, they overlap, but they don't work in conjunction with each other. Okay, equipment. We need to replace a few things. The cube truck, which is the truck that the, the labor uses to deliver supplies, that is starting to show some significant issues. The problem with it is it's a short haul truck. If you know anything about vehicles, the worst thing you can do is do short hauls. Never, the engine really never gets heated up and it takes a toll on the vehicle. So the aluminum box, because of the salts, is really starting to rot out. The floor in the box itself already has holes in it. So before its value goes completely away, the best thing to do is to get rid of it and buy a new one. We'll be looking at getting, you know, a similar type of vehicle with a aluminum liftgate on the back end of it, just like the one we have. Also in there is another pickup truck. If you've seen the 2002 pickup truck that we have, it has in excess of 90,000 miles on it. It's got as many dents as it has flat sheets, pieces of sheet metal. The plow, we don't even bother hanging on it because that has holes in it. So we, we would like to get that replaced as well, and I would like to assign that to the grounds worker so he has a vehicle that he can pretty much keep and run on his own when he's in the district.
So on that one, I want to point out, we were allowed by the taxpayers to set up a vehicle and equipment reserve that could be utilized for these purchases. This again will be a separate line item that the budget, the voters can vote on. It will be a proposition to expand certain funds from the vehicle and equipment reserve. It will also include at that time, when you have your presentation from Mary Banco on transportation, it will also include the cost of new buses. So that all gets rolled into one proposition. The voters authorized how much we could put in the reserve and they have to authorize when we spend from that reserve. That's just that reserve's legal requirements.
Okay, another item that is, is equipment, but it's listed separately, is technology. Again. One of the things that we did a few years ago was buy some radios. And we bought them for safety purposes.
Dave, can you, what line are you looking at?
Laura, I think you've got it in there as the equipment, technology. Is that, is that correct?
Equipment, technology, I thought we had put in there was for the new Siemens software.
No, no, there's, there's a software line that you created. It's on the other, it's on the spreadsheet that I have. I don't know why it doesn't show up on here.
Because I individually have to pick and choose which ones to print because I have access to everything. So I apologize, but I don't think I gave you guys that number because you know I remember seeing that, but I didn't hit. It's a 460 code, David?
Yeah, I believe it is.
I did not select 460, so I apologize. It was not printed on yours.
Okay, so what is there? What's the total?
Can you give everyone the totals?
The, the $50,000 for the software for the energy management system is that line item you're talking about. Okay, the equipment, technology one that we're going to talk about right now is for radios.
What's the total?
$50,000. Now, what, why do we need new radios? When we bought these over the years, we bought them for our critical response teams for each of the buildings. Those are the teams that if we go into a lockout, not a lockdown, but a lockout, they are assigned to go to doors and to make sure that whatever threat is outside of the building can't get in. So we have roughly about 60 of these and we also have radios for our entire administrative team. The beauty of the radios that we currently have is that they operate on both a VHF and a UHF frequency. What does that mean? That means that we can talk to the police department and the fire department on the VHF band that the town owns that a frequency on. The UHF band is the same band that our buses operate on. It's a beautiful situation. It's a single radio. You can talk on both of them. The problem is, the FCC now has banned these radios simply because they talk on two different frequencies, which means we can't use them and we have to get rid of them. So here we are. We are at a point where we have to get another frequency and all new radios and repeaters in the district. And the repeaters allow the, the conversation to go from one building to the other building to the other building so that I can talk from here to the high school, to the high school, to here.
So David, $50,000 is embedded, the radios, the software and the FCC license?
In this technology? It's not the Siemens software.
No, for the radios.
Yes.
It's the technology for the radios.
Yes.
It's the ra, it's not $50,000 worth of radios. It's the software behind the scenes that run the radio and the license from the FCC for the frequency, is that correct?
Correct.
And a repeater?
Correct.
However, I'm going to go back 10 years before where it was not unusual for us to buy a Kenwood for $800 a piece to do exactly what these radios do.
Correct.
Right?
The beauty of these radios, when I found them, is they're $35. I didn't care if they got destroyed. It's $35. It's not 800. Unfortunately, now the new radios we're talking about are not going to be $35 radios. I can tell you that. They're not 800.
We spent a lot of money, just even five years ago, building up our bank of these radios. These are the radios our phys ed teachers take outside. These are the radios we use in lockdowns and lockouts, shelters in place. These are the radios that Barb has near her phone so that we can all hear what's going on. We can hear the bus garage and the police can hear us too.
I thought you were saying.
Now that you can't do both on the radios anymore, they're not allowed to.
I can do it with this radio. The new radios, I will not be able to do that. There are still some radios that will allow that to happen, but I don't know if we're going to be able to afford to buy any of them.
What are you going to, which one are you going to be hooked up to?
We're going to be on a UHF band.
Which will connect to who?
It'll, it'll connect to a new FCC frequency for us. And we can program it so it can still talk on our bus frequency. Now, I don't know if the police department will go back to monitoring our new frequency.
Isn't that a problem?
Not really. I mean, it, it is, but it isn't. But I'll work through it. Trust me, I'll, I'll work through it with the chief and we'll figure out how we can get in touch with them and get them to continue to monitor it.
But we have other safety protocols in place now too that we didn't have five years ago. We've got two SROs.
Well, that's, that's exactly.
So we basically have a full-time SRO. We've got emergency buttons that we didn't have before. We've got cameras. We've got all kinds of backups besides this radio. We've got phone systems that can't go down because Lucinda made sure we had backups to it. It's very different than it was before this last capital project when we needed to go back to the old rotary phone if in fact, something went, went awry.
Right. And, and you have to remember that the SRO not only carries our radio, they carry the police department radio. So they're constantly monitoring both. And we may very well, once we get our new radio, we may just set one up at the police dispatch station so they can listen if that is what we need to do. We'll, we'll figure that out when we get to it.
So David, this new system then will keep the Eden School information off of people's local scanners, correct? Theoretically?
I'd like to say yes. I can't promise you that. I mean, people find the frequencies out one way or another.
Right, but generally speaking, if it's not on the same as the police, there are other advantages to not being there. Some of our chatter back and forth, people won't have to hear.
Correct. And that was, that was really part of why the police department stopped monitoring the bus garage frequency. They love the fact that the bus drivers are really the eyes to the community. They see things that the police can't get to. It's a wonderful thing. But there's enough chatter on there that they can't concentrate on the emergency stuff going on on their own radio. So I know that Mary and, and Sherry, if there's something that happens, they're immediately on the phone to the police department and they really, really do appreciate having our bus drivers out there.
I think it's interesting that, um, just what I see on social media and I hear throughout the town, that there are a fair unfortunate, fair amount of people that in essence feel that any of that safety stuff is hogwash. Like, why are we spending money on that? If I didn't work in a school setting, I wouldn't understand why we need all this, but it's 2020 and it's unfortunate that we can't find a better way or a way to explain to some of these. of these naysayers in the public. You know, it's not like when you were in school in 1960 where, you know, you could come and go. The school was open 24/7. Like, churches aren't even open 24/7 anymore. And the reality is, you need this stuff, but some people don't believe that.
No, I agree with you, Cheryl, but I, all you have to do is watch the news. You don't really have to work in a school to understand that there's a lot of scary stuff going on.
It is, and I, I watch the news because I work in a school, you know, and see that stuff, but it's point of interest.
Yep.
And if you put a parallel to it to your own homes, how many people, even in the town of Eden, have a security camera or a system on their home? How many people lock their car doors, right? They ever even have spent any money on before, right? Yep, the Ring Door Technology. Would you pick up on your phone? That's exactly it. That's your software licensing?
All right.
Wait till Lucinda tells you about what it's going to take to protect our, our computer systems at school?
Mm-hmm.
From ransomware and phishing expeditions and all that.
So, I can also tell you that a lot of people would say, "Well, jeez, everybody's carrying cell phones now." I've been in the emergency services well over 40 years, and I can tell you that when something major happens, the systems that are out there, and I don't care if it's Verizon, AT&amp;T, or whatever you have, they get so overwhelmed, you can't make a phone call with these things, no matter how hard you try. So, you need to have some secondary level of communication beyond these things.
Okay.
Okay, utilities, I just want to talk about them for a second. I know Laura's going to touch on that when she does the rest of the budget. Utilities are what they are. We are at the whim of the utility companies. We do a number of things to try and help with controlling utility costs. We're involved in consortiums. So, we buy in large groups with other school districts and municipalities. That tends to drive the price of the utility down. That, that's a good thing. We are now taking advantage of NYSERTA, and you heard me mention that before. One of the things that we are involved in right now is our utility monitoring for this building, the GLP, and the bus garage. It is a NYSERTA grant for three years where we provide them information on our buildings. They trend it. They tell us whether we're doing a great job compared to buildings of the same size or similar size, or whether we really need to continue to, to cut back and monitor better and control our utility costs. So, that's, as I said, a three-year, no-cost program. We're into it about six months right now. So far, the information that I have received for the first six months looks pretty favorable, which is a good thing. When you do go on grid, as we are now, the, the key to keeping your electric cost down is to control those spikes of electricity. And that's part of everything that I talked about, that software for the energy management system, how we turn things on, how we stage it, what, what time we put things on, what time we turn things off. If all of a sudden you have an immediate hit to your electrical system and your demand, which is what we're talking about, goes way high, you end up paying for that high level of demand for a long period of time before it goes away and that ratchet restarts. So, it's important that we do as much as we can to control all of those things from happening.
This is super impressive, I have to tell you, that it's a $650 increase for all the utilities over here. I, I haven't seen that number before. I'm impressed. Super impressed.
Okay, so in a nutshell, there's my, there's my budget. That's the explanation of it. I'm more than happy to take any questions and try and answer them for you.
So, Dave, do you know what your total budget is? Is it 623 or 673?
673.
673 because it doesn't have the $50,000 in it for the radios?
Right.
Okay. Laura, could you put the correct?
I will send them out.
Thank you.
It's all this new software where we upgraded, and where David only sees his codes, I see the whole district, so now I have to cherry pick his codes to get a report, and I simply missed one.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Now, we're going to go to my PowerPoint, Lucinda, and I'm going to start on the second slide of tonight's discussion. We are now going to look at the budget from 827 on the bottom left-hand corner. That's our utilities. First, we're going to talk about our utility projection, and then our debt service projection. And then, as we go to the next slide, I want to talk about what our original rollover expenditure assumptions were based on past history. Typically, our utilities go up 5%, and our debt service had remained static from the prior year. So, now we're going to move on to the next slide, and we're going to talk about our projected costs. David touched on it. Now, I'm going to give you the term. It's called SMEC, School Municipal Energy Consortium. Municipalities across New York State come together, and we collectively buy the commodities on, on the market to reduce our energy costs. There are towns, villages, the school districts, from the North Country all the way through to the Southern Tier. So, this year, oh, and then on top of that, we have a utility transportation cost, which is set by National Fuel, and we use here National Grid. So, they set what it's going to cost to transport the commodities that we collectively buy with all these other like entities to drive down our cost. We had a very good year of purchasing, and utility prices are in an incredible spot. And so, what has been recommended to me by our consortium is that our, we should hold the majority of our utilities at last year's level. So, as you'll see on the printout that you have in front of you, I've increased the water bill just a little bit because that way, there's a little bit more of a cushion if the town, if the water prices go up. Now, the Erie County is controlling the water for Eden, so I want to make sure we're covered. Our electricity, actually what their projections wound up bringing it down a little bit. So, overall, as Sandy said earlier, a $650 increase in utilities instead of 5%, .15 versus 5%. So, this will help us maintain our budget projection, priority of managing the budget and keeping costs affordable for Eden District residents.
You owe me a cookie.
What?
You owe me a cookie.
Okay, so on the next screen, I want to move on to the printout from 832 in the lower left-hand corner. We're going to talk about our debt service. Now, because this PowerPoint is out there for the public to look at, I want to remind people, what the heck is a debt service? It's our mortgage payment. So, when we go out for our capital projects, we bond them. Instead of going to the bank, we go out for a bond, which allows the people who are investing in our future to get an interest-free payment from us, and so it's called a bond. So, what factors determine the changes in our debt service were, we bonded last year our current capital projects. So, projection numbers became hardcore numbers that will go forward because now we have, just like you have on your mortgage, it's called an amortization schedule. It tells how much in principal interest we must pay every year over the next, I believe it's just 13 more years of payment on it. We retired a 2004 bus garage project bond. So, our overall budget for our debt service went down 2.69, or $66,986. Again, these are all good things that will help later because I guarantee you, all our costs will not be going in this direction. It's just we're lucky tonight. So, then, does anyone have any questions about either of those areas of the board So, now we're going to go on to talk about the budget timeline. I've taken off tonight's presentation. We're starting to whittle this screen down. So, on February 12th will be a community forum with public input before the Board of Education meeting. So, that, at the Board of Education meeting, they'll get presentations, but again, the presentations will be similar in style to tonight, where we're giving information to the Board of Education. You're asking some questions, and then we can go back and work on our budget projections for you. February 26th will be another Board of Education meeting. March 4th will be the Board of Education. The 18th of March will be when I will present two or three scenarios for the board because on April 21st, you're going to have to adopt a budget because on April 24th, I'm mandated to tell the state what you adopted. And it's set that date because I believe that's also the date for the BOCs budget vote, so all the districts have their board meeting on the same night throughout our BOCs. And then on May 5th will be a presentation to the community so that they will know that's, and then we'll have, on May 19th will be our budget vote, and hopefully, the taxpayers will be pleased with the savings and things that we have. The tax cap will be at a presentation on February 26th.
So, there's, is it by March 1st that the, that the board needs to tell you what the number is that they want to go out with on the budget? Can you talk about that for a minute?
Okay, so on February 26th is the tax cap presentation to the Board of Education because what I will need from you that night is whether or not you want to exceed the tax cap or whether you're going to stay within the tax cap. That's the only answer that I need. I don't need a number. I just need to know whether or not you plan to exceed the budget tax cap, which right now, 1.9% is one of the factors in there, and it's .0053, I think, for the growth. So, it's a small growth, but again, we will be doing that February 26th so that on March 1st, I can tell the state what direction you have asked me to go in. And my last screen is always questions, so that if you guys have some questions for me, otherwise, I have completed.
Now, with all this, how, how does the financing for this year, which looks like it, in the papers, it says it's going to be about 3%, how does that factor in?
The revenue side of the budget will not be coming yet. That will be coming later on February 12th, so the next meeting. I'm still working on digesting the governor's issues, listening to around the state, how they're recommending that we handle this, because, as we spoke earlier, there was a foundation aid formula in 2009, I believe, that was developed out of a lawsuit for inequitable funding of education in New York State. Now, remember, 2009 was well before the property tax cap, but we're still not being properly funded for that foundation aid. And now they want to take some of our expense-driven aids for our computers, our hardware, our software, our textbooks, and our BOCs.
And our library.
And our library, and they want to wrap all of that into the foundation aid, which leads to a whole lot of other questions that I'm trying to get answered so that when I present it, I can give you a full picture of what's going on and what this means because this is not good news for any of the rural districts in New York State, and Eden is a rural district.
So, the question right now, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I think you know the answer, is right now, if the governor's run stayed the same it was, what is it that it is costing us?
What it will cost us in the future is we will no longer be able to sustain, unless there's, the revenue is put in there. I'll never know. For example-
Your predictability is gone.
Your predictability is gone, where David Martin is asking to entertain utilizing BOCs to get help out because, of course, we can't afford to hire somebody to come out five days a week to help with our safety. Five districts will go in on this one person so he can go each place one day. We won't get aid on that if this stands. We won't be able to keep up with the salary increases for our technology network specialist. There's so many things that BOCs does for us. And BOCs was designed to help districts just like Eden to maintain our levels of service that these kids need, kids need, so that when they go to college, they've worked on a computer. They go to college, this is, they've gone to the trades, the ones that don't want to go to college, our CTELE courses. And all of that, we pay one year, and we get paid back a percentage the following year based on their formulas for that expense-driven aid. I won't be able to project. So, to even know how many kids we could afford to send to a PTEC program would be impossible to calculate if they rolled that into foundation aid. Not to mention that we share with students that live in Eden whose parents send them to private schools. They get their portion of their textbook aid that we pass through to the private schools. They get their portion of hardware and software aid that pass through to private schools. I don't even know if they figured out how they would allow, how we would be able to keep that up, how we would know how much to send to them and things like that. So, there's so many questions with this new proposal of the governor's that we're really working hard to get on top of the numbers. Mrs. Anselon and I were just yesterday at a meeting about it. Tomorrow, we have a training to go to on the census because the census affects how our aid is generated under the current formulas. And so, we're going to learn about that so that we can turnkey some of that back so that we can let people know why these things are important, why it's important to answer your census and not just throw it in the garbage. This schedule is out there. The PowerPoint is in the public section on the budget, so right now, any person who is watching this presentation can see this out there because it's accessible to the public.
Barb, where can they find it on the website?
On Board Docs.
Okay.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education meeting be adjourned.
Second.
Any discussion?
Wait till Don gets up. We're going to discuss how Don walks up to the desk.
Where did he go?
He's coming. He's right there.
There he is. Ready, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Stay well, everybody. Stay well.